Call the meeting of Abbotstown Borough at order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Laura's here, Hannah's here, I'm here, April's here, Austin's here, Mayor's here, Tim's here. And Ted, Ted's here for.
I'm gonna get you a new placard, Ted.
Chief Graham's here and David is here.
Okay, so we were supposed to have Kevin Mao here, but he said he may run a little late. He's at a charity event, so he said if he can just have some time at the end, that'll be fine.
All right, next on the agenda is public comment. This public comment is on items that are on the agenda only. That's correct. All right. Approval of the minutes. Motion by Austin, second by Laura. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
For the, for the treasurer's report, you'll see the numbers over here on the sideboard. We are currently in a very good position for the Borough General Fund. We've got just over $200,000 currently making fuels, we're up over $200,000. And then we have Council Sealsables being 900. And we have 36.5 in our county pligot for our grant matches. Bringing total revenues of 463, 497.13. Our payables, 26, 962.58. Of course, we have no debt because we paid off the building a couple of months ago. If you remember, that was 13 years early and $177,000 in savings. So our cash position currently, if we ended operations today, 436,534.55. Just for some of those who may not know, when I joined the borough back in 2017, this number was negative 300. So we've done pretty well with our finance. I've presented the bills and the reports, and we're asking for a motion on those.
So move.
Motion by April, second by Hannah, accept the treasurer's report. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
With the bills, I do want to note that the bills were a little bit higher than normal this time. And the reason for that is we started our new Savvy Citizen app this month, actually this week. We got it up and running. And some of the other, we had the $5,400 to United Hook and Ladder for the volunteer fire refunds, which is a pass-through, we get that from the state, and then we give it to the fire department. We had a little extra in our engineering bill because we had our traffic study for the parking, and we also incurred calls with Kinsley when they had to redo the roadways to spec. And and the other larger bills. Oh, $9,300 to Ghetto Electric, and that's part of our grant money. That was for the new upgrades of electric outlets in the pavilion, the emergency lights, which are motion sense, the other lights for evening activity, we also got lights on the pavilion. And we upgraded the electric, which was pretty much shattered, so that we could have bands or something up there in the future. And then we also put outlets in the garage for the police department, and we fixed up the landscape shed, so that there's light and electric in there as well. Oh, and we also put light and electric in the public work shed, where we keep all of our signs and stuff. And then that's, that's part of the Adams County grant, so half of that is covered by our grant.
All right, entertain a motion. Motion by April. Second, Hannah. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. The first item I have on the agenda tonight for action is the extension of Solid Waste Agreement with Waste Connections. As you know, we are in a group that we've been in pretty much for the last six years. And that was put together by Adams County Planning. And it includes us, East Berlin, Cumberland, and Strabane. And so we, we bid out our contracts together so that we can get better pricing, because if we're just a small municipality, they're gonna jack up our prices. Because it's gonna cost them more, but if there's a large chunk, they'll give us a little bit. So tonight, we have the option to extend that agreement by one year. The agreement was signed in at 2020. This will extend it through March of '26. The reason it's advisable to do that is because I just went through another contract last year, my other borough, and prices went way up. With the extension, they're locked in to our other pricing. So yes, this will be the last time we have the opportunity to have cheap garbage. But I've already spoken with the other three municipalities. They've said that they all have it on their agendas, we're the first to come through. Two of the three assured me they're gonna extend. And that they also want to bid with us on the next round. So that's why it's important to keep the cycles together. And then the other, the other municipality said they weren't sure yet how it would go, but financially it made sense.
All right, is there a motion to extend the Solid Waste Agreement?
Second.
Motion by April, second by Laura. Any discussion?
Yeah, is there a way to propose possibly getting weekly recycling through them at all?
We, we can change the parameters of the agreement in the next, we can't change it midstream. Because we've already, we've already been through the vetting process. Basically, a bunch of them bid on the parameters, so next time we can put that in. Understand it will, it will increase.
Correct.
Your costs considerably. But what we can do is when we bid it out, we can ask them for a two-week, and you know, like a bi-weekly and then a weekly number.
Okay.
Yeah, we can get both.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to see that, just I see obviously pack recycling bins and stuff like that, you know, pretty frequently, so.
Yeah, so what will happen is after, after this next extension would go through, then we would put the bid packets together with the other municipalities, and then we can, we can customize that if we need to.
Okay.
Yep.
It is unlimited recycling though, even though it's bi-weekly.
It's unlimited, you know, obviously if your, it's just if your can is maxed out, they won't take a second can. So if you set out two recycling bins, they've already denied my second can. I've tried.
Don't use so many recycling. Sorry, couldn't resist.
I got a woman and she loves Amazon and boxes like crazy, so.
Sorry, I couldn't resist.
No, you're good, it's endless, so like I said, just something to look, you know, look into in the future.
Yeah, absolutely, we can, what we'll do is we'll have meetings prior to that, to sit down and figure out what parameters we want, and then I'll go with the other municipalities, and then we'll sit down, figure it all out, and then we'll present it to, to the county, and the county will bid it out for us.
And does that start next year?
So we, we would have to have another agreement in place by March of '26. So yeah, we would probably next year, this time, that's when we'll start that process.
Yeah, you can get involved in that too, if you wanna see what it's like to me.
Oh, yeah. By all means. Please.
You gotta have a motion, so.
I would love some help with it.
All right, we have a motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. So we had our budget workshop two weeks ago now. We spent about two hours covering our budgets, and quite honestly, it's probably one of the longer meetings we've had in a while. But I think it was good, I think we highlighted a couple areas that, that we need to look at, and I've made those adjustments. So just to cover it, essentially, it's the exact same revenues with just a little bit less expenses. We're doing pretty good, we've got a fairly predictable budget at this point. There's some things here and there in the capital that we'll discuss, but what I've got is for the advertisement, no municipal tax increase, of course, because I've told council since day one, I will not increase your taxes after that initial increase. So no, no increase. General Fund balanced budget proposal projects revenues of 386, 300, and projected expenses of 370, 628. For liquid fuels, total revenues of 243, 200, and expenses of 150,000. I'll cover some of that in a little bit. Capital budget, total revenues 321, 763, with projected expenses of 100,894. Pending grant applications. So, oh, there we go. For liquid fuels, we were looking at 312, 399, oh, that's General Fund, my bad. Here we go. Capital funds. So the park, Adams County, second round, which will bring in the nine-hole disc golf course, two land bridges, and a small gazebo down at the end of the park. That's gonna cost us 12, 116, and that is a 50-50 match, so we get that equally. DCNR, first round, 2025, we are in for 88,778. That is for the tot lot, the small child lot and six-base swing. The second round of DCNR, following year, projecting ahead, 73, 357, will give us the large child playground and the safety swings. All of that will have the safety matting underneath of it, so, and that's, that's a large part of the cost. So total expenses over the next two years for, for the park improvements will be 199, 251. But out of that, we get 398, 496, and we gotta factor in the other DCNR. We get an extra $30,000 each session there, which will reduce our costs, that'll bring it down to 139. And we'll get 458, or 448 for that in match. So after the park is done, we will still have capital funds, 122,512. There's a return of invested match that I have right now in the pligot account, gaining a lot of interest. So that's just about 21,000, so that's 143, 464. And then for liquid fuels, revenues, we're starting at 243, 200. The bridge project, which is now, after the last 180,000 we got, we're up to 810,000 that we got for that project. We're paying only 35,000 towards that. And then we are also going to look at resurfacing Country Club Road from the end of the bridge project up to past the Myers property there, Spicer Drive. We're budgeting 45,000 for those additions. Nice thing about it is we're still also looking at extra money, because some of the other projects aren't happening. So that makes funds available, and, and we can get it to cover some of our costs. And then Columbia Gas, of course, when we're done figuring out the restoration project here, we'll have about 60% of our roads with an actual paving instead of the surface like we did before. And then the other areas that we're gonna do in conjunction with that, we've budgeted 70,000. So that brings us down to 93, and then over the next two years, we'll accumulate another 60,000, which will leave us at 153,200 after all projects are done. Any questions from council?
Thank you, Dave.
So what I'm asking for here is for approval of the personnel recommendations, which, which is part of the payroll in the budget, and advertise the 2025 budgets.
Second.
Motion by April.
Hannah got it.
Second by Hannah. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. So we have budget workshops we don't need, and that usually happens. But I, I think we might add two meetings first couple of years, but once we saw the trend of the finances, it just seemed to be silly to have the meeting. So I'm asking for cancellation of those budget workshops at this time.
So move. Second.
Motion by April, second by Laura. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Columbia Gas Restoration Plan, I know I touched on that a little bit here. There are some sidewalks, I got some calls this week, some sidewalks that still aren't done over towards East Fleet Street, Abbotstown Industries area. And so basically what, the holdup there is Columbia Gas wants to come in and do it, but we have a restoration agreement with them, and we're just trying to figure out exactly where they're gonna fix it. And then the areas they're not gonna fix, that's the money that we're budgeting to add to the project. I talked to our contact at PennDOT for our liquid fuels, so we can use liquid fuels for that project if we want to, or we can use capital funds. That'll be an option later on. But essentially, if Kinsley will give us the same rate that they already get in their agreement with Columbia Gas, because that's already a vetted contract, then we can go ahead and piggyback on that and get, get some work done while they're in the borough. So we're just waiting to hear back from their higher-ups, make sure that that's okay. I don't anticipate they'll get out before October 30th, which they've extended. Usually it's October 15th when they stop doing paving, state level. They have extended it two more weeks officially through PennDOT, so. But I don't anticipate seeing them back till spring, until we get everything figured out. The important thing is it's getting done. So we'll have some nice roads.
What's our communication plan with the residents?
So next item is Borough Communication Solution implemented. Thank you. So we heard some chatter about difficulties finding out information about the borough. Of course, we've done a lot to put a lot of information on our website over the last couple of years. I'm very proud to say we've won awards for our website and the information that we give. We used to have a social media site, however, social media sites are not a good place to vet public issues. This is the proper setting. So what I did was I researched a little bit. There is a Code Red program that I use in my other borough, well, I'm not real impressed with it. Savvy Citizen reached out. I'm sure some of you may have seen their commercials, but we do have information out on the counter, how you can sign up. Basically, it's just an app you download, and it'll push notifications to you whenever we put something out. So this week, we've been working on training. So Elijah and I got trained on how to put information on there. Elijah worked with our webmaster at the county and got the plugins done, so that whenever we put something on there, it goes to our website automatically. And vice versa, you can go to our website, click on it, and it'll take you to our Savvy Citizen page. On there, we can push out our agendas when we put our agendas out. You know, we can put out notifications like our trunk-or-treat, which I've put out. So we have started to do some of this. We haven't gotten it all done, because it's just this week. But we will continue to add to that. And it was only $1,800. I mean, honestly, I pay 4,500 for Code Red over in the other borough, and most of your notifications get blocked by the phone carrier. Only like a quarter of my people over there even have access. So this seems to be a much better one-way communication without the forum. And then if anybody has any questions, of course, email me, call into the office. It is your fastest way to get information. I know some of you in here talk to me all the time, and it's easy. If you don't understand something, if there's a concern you have, you call me up. I either engage Mr. Graham, Mr. Shultis, or, or Mr. Brillhart, and we get some things done, so. Hopefully, you'll take that information and spread the word, because we don't have a Facebook page. You can direct people to that and let them know that, you know, we'll be putting information out that way. And it'll be good for snow emergencies, right? Because I know we had some problems with some communications last year, snow emergencies. So this gives us a direct way to get to you and, and let you know. Did it, did I cover?
Well, I was asking about with the restoration plan, the citizens whose sidewalks were removed by Columbia Gas and have not been replaced, is there a plan to communicate with them directly?
With those citizens? Oh, they're the ones communicating with me. That's, they've, they've already made the outreach, they're the ones that are letting me know that, hey, they got skipped when, when they were in. Trunk-or-treat, so I talked to Pastor Sean, of course, a couple of years ago, we moved trunk-or-treat from the park down to St. John's, and they are happy to host again, so they will host on Halloween night. Time to be announced, they're gonna coordinate with the fire department, of course, and probably the police department to make sure that everybody's safe and we have a nice event. But I can say I stopped in last year with the family, and I mean, it was nice. It was really nice, they had a nice row of vehicles, they dressed it all up, and anybody can do that. So, you know, it's not ju, if you wanna be part of that and you wanna give out candy there, by all means, contact Pastor Sean, and, and he'll get you set up with that.
I was informed I had to do it this year.
You have to do it.
I was informed, yes.
Do they have bounce houses and different stuff for the kids and movies up?
Yep.
Yeah.
I was surprised, yeah, they had a DJ and everything.
Yeah.
So just informational, the 2025 rental inspection schedules. Elijah's really been working on that here the last two weeks to get that together for me. We were not able to get anything viable from the post office that would help us. They were willing to sell us services, but they were not willing to share information. So we had to rethink that, we went through our tax duplicate. And basically, if you're a homeowner, you're gonna have a tax bill and you're gonna have a per capita bill. And if you're not living in your house, you won't have a per capita, but you'll have a real estate. And also, if you're a tenant, you'll have per capita, but you won't have a real estate bill. So that's what Elijah is trying to sort through, 798 parcels. And there's no executable, there's, there's no Excel that he can.
Yeah.
Manipulate, he has to type everything.
It came in PDF, I didn't come in.
Yeah, and they don't have one that we can use, so. Once this is set up, what it'll, it'll also help with our tenant registrations. Because there are, we've already identified some places that the owners have moved out. They've moved tenants in, but they haven't told us. Which right now, there's, there's no fee for that, but we have to know who's where, so that we know that we're getting the correct taxes. And when I look at income, that's, I go deep into that, so. So we are working on that, and hopefully by next meeting, I'll be able to tell you that we're ready to send out notices to let people know what the schedule is. And then local partnership opportunities. Something that I've kinda done on my own, and I apologize in advance, but I have spoken to a couple of property owners in town who may be interested in coming up with an agreement with the borough for some parking spaces, like public parking spaces. Some of these, some of these lot owners were already approached by some of the other businesses downtown. There's only so many parking spots in, in the square, and honestly, don't, don't park in the square. Getting out of the square stuff. But on the side roads, and, and I thought with some of the other issues that, that we've been looking at, you know, maybe it's time that we have something like that to offer. So I have reached out to a couple of the property owners, put bugs in their ear, and hopefully they won't use any spray, and they'll listen to the bugs, and come back to me here next month with, with some proposals. Other than that, update fresh as of 3 o'clock today, our camera system is done. So we've upgraded our, our camera system. We used to have five cameras total. We now have 12. So we've had this building covered, all the outsides, everything in the back, the garages, the sheds. We also have cameras going out into the park, so that we can see if there's activity in the park. We've got it on both sides of, of the pavilion, and then today, we've got four cameras down around the baseball field. So now we can see everywhere down along there. And it's all night vision. So hopefully, we won't have anybody spray paint their Insta like they did this past month down at the baseball field. It's good advertising, though. The Adams County grant, that was one of the last things we had to do for that. So there is still some landscape materials I gotta get to finish up out here. But now we've got the two fire pits that are out here and available under the pavilion. And I think that'll, that'll work out well. I'll get that closed out, and then the second round's already submitted for next year, so. That'll be the disc golf course and the bridges and the gazebo. And then we already discussed the bridge update, so the engineer was authorized to, to start working on that this past week. So I'm keeping a nice fat file to make sure we keep track of all that. The last thing is council would ask me to look into pricing on a security window. Price came in, I, I talked to Susquehanna Door, it's kind of a specialized situation, so I asked some other municipalities, you know, where they go. We gave them a call, and 45, 60 to put the windows in, and that'll be basically like a police window. Unless council has any major individual objections to that, it's under the, the quote amounts, and, and I can go ahead and get that done. Okay. Hearing none. That's my report.
All right.
Thank you.
Tim, do you have anything for us?
Do you want to get to Mr. Mao, who is here, I think?
Oh, yeah.
Since we skipped him.
We can do that.
Kevin, you're on the agenda as our guest to talk about your business.
So I think you've been, you've distributed a zoning map change to everybody, so everybody got to see that?
Not a zoning change, a subdivision plan.
Yes, subdivision change for the potential zoning, yes. So what we're looking at potentially doing is, is remove the business, our store. So what we're looking at potentially doing is, is to move the business parcel which is up in the area of the town back to the new commercial development that is coming later. Try and keep the business in town then. So to do that, I have a piece of property that actually goes on the high street. Just chisel off essentially, subdivide that parcel that the back end actually connects to the new commercial area that we have growing here in town. And then build eventually, once we've got that subdivided off, and get a zoning change to take that subdivision plan and tack that onto the commercial. Is it commercial or is it industrial?
So, yeah, it's, it's CI.
It's CI, so, yeah, so commercial zoning. So, yeah, essentially, the entrance where, where, did you take over Dale Alley yet, or is that soon to come?
We, we haven't dedicated it yet.
Okay, but that's coming at some point this year, I'm assuming?
I would assume they'll, they'll approach us now that their project is completed.
Okay, all right. So essentially, the entrance for the business would come in off of Dale Alley, the new created Dale Alley, and go into my parcel of land back there where we create this. And move the business from that end of town to this end of town. So that's really, of course, we've, we've got the plan submitted to the, to the county to look at. So I think we have thirty days for them to review and get back to us. But I just kind of wanted to throw that out, kind of, if anybody has any questions. At this point, there's no decisions, of course, to be made yet until we hear back from what the county has to offer up. But if there's any, any comments, thoughts from the council, I'd be glad. Trying to keep the business in town from a piece of parcel that I have and, and keep all those folks employed here in the borough of Athens.
Are you still going to keep, use your other buildings?
Yeah, I, I don't know what we're going to do yet. We may continue to rent that as well and actually grow the part of, actually, there was some talk maybe growing the graphics business farther, because we have the graphics side in there, maybe expanding that throughout the building. Not sure yet, but at this point, the bulk of the business will, will come back here.
That's nice back there, back there, truly nice back there.
It's great, I mean, it looks great. Quite honestly, it was a, I just stumbled into the fact that back into my property, you know, after Dale Alley was put in, I drove back here one day and went, wow, okay. This actually could work out. So, yeah, so that's, that's where I'm at, yeah, yeah.
Is this going to be Fire Store or now in a project?
Well, it's, 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 it's still KLM Investments.
Well, I, yeah, I understand that, but I didn't know distinguishing from the two. I didn't know if it's going to be Fire Store or something different.
No, it would be KLM Investments, and then would be leased to the Fire Store. Same thing as what we're doing up there now. So it'd be my property, but I would be leasing to a public safety group.
Right.
Which would treat us as a fire store.
Right, I didn't know you were starting brand new or not, that's what my biggest concern was.
And of course, that keeps our employees in town, and of course, as you got to know, most of our employees are the members of the fire department, the United Ladder. And during the daytime, we run the fire department here and keep the fire trucks running. So, so I'd like to try and keep, keep it here in town and keep everybody running fire trucks too and helping out the borough. Any questions?
Couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
On the plans that you submitted to our office, there's a non-building waiver note on there. If your intentions are to build on that property, probably shouldn't have that non-building waiver note.
Okay.
Yeah, they'll have to submit a module, you know, for whatever you're proposing there.
Okay, I'll let Bob share as soon as he knows what he knew, Bob?
Yes.
I'll let him know. He was anxious to get to Myrtle Beach last week when he was, he was finalized.
Understood.
Some golf rounds, I'm sure. Scrambling through, but I'll, I'll let him know that, thank you.
And another question for you and, and the borough. Currently, the way the plan is, is laid out, if Lot Two, which is the lot you're cutting off, the bigger lot in the back, would be approved, that currently doesn't front on a public street because Dale Alley has not been dedicated yet. You know, the ordinance says, you know, a lot that you're creating has to front on a public street or have access to a public street.
Right. So, so just finishing up with Smizer, now we have to go through the dedication process.
I'm just bringing this up because we don't want to get the cart in front of the horse here. You know, we don't want to create a lot that doesn't have road access. We want to make sure the road access is taken care of before we create, you know, finalize.
Weren't you looking into an easement with, with Smizer?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I, I need to have a chat with Chuck here, yeah, and potentially get a little bit of an easement back here for potentially stormwater management, so we're not a hundred percent on the fact that we got enough area, but it's close. So let's see if we can do a chalk. Yeah, yeah, so, and I mean, it's basically, he just needs to approach you to go ahead to.
Basically, they just have to say, hey, you know, here's the offer.
And I'm sure they probably don't want to climb streets anymore, so.
Probably not.
Move him on that sooner than later.
Right.
I mean, we've received the plan in our office, but we have not finalized.
Right.
We just started looking at it, so.
Yeah, I just submitted it to the county two days ago.
Yeah.
So, yep, and it came in the day before that, so.
I mean, essentially, I just wanted to come back here, show my face and tell you what we were thinking. And, I mean, if there's any objections, there's no need for me to, I mean, if everybody says this is a horrible idea, I really don't need to proceed, so. Kind of where I'm at, and I just wanted to kind of get a, get a, let you guys know what, what my plans were and to kind of answer any question or feeling a question you may have.
Everything goes right when you plan on breaking ground, prospectively?
I, I would think, hopefully, you know, sometime first quarter next year, maybe, late first quarter.
Towards the middle of summer, end of summer?
To be done, you mean?
No, no, just to break ground, that way we can move on forward with the ground, with the.
This is the end of the first quarter, that's, that would be March.
November.
Yeah, so, I mean, hopefully, sometime beginning next year.
First quarter, end of first quarter.
Nice thing about, we're, we're pretty landlocked, there's not a whole lot of opportunities for us to expand here in the borough. So utilizing some of that land back there. It's pretty good.
Keeps another business and some extra dollars in the, inside the borough limits.
No, we continue to expand the base, we don't have to raise the rates.
Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thanks, Kevin.
All right, thank you, guys.
Oh, hey, what'd you shoot today? Good job. He was in a charity golf tournament for Commissioner File, so. See you, buddy.
All right, back to Tim.
All right, thanks. So Borough Council had an executive session tonight from five forty-five to six o'clock PM to discuss certain attorney-client privilege matters under Section 708A5 of the Sunshine Act. Updates on legal activities to date. The only pending thing is the car trailer litigation appeal in the Commonwealth Court. That was kind of dormant for about two months, but just the other day, I started getting correspondence from the court. So the case will proceed, and I'll keep you apprised as we motor on here. So that's all I have to report on tonight.
Okay. All right, Ted?
The main thing I have is connection with the Sutton Run Estates, the proposed development down there on Sutton Road. Want to ask a question of the borough, their intentions, do they intend to accept those streets after they're built, you know, dedicate to the borough? Or do, I mean, there's going to be a proposed homeowners association in that development? Do they, would rather the streets be maintained by the homeowners association?
So when, when Ted brought that to me, I, my first response was, what does Chief think about? Because he's got to do the, the policing and the code anyway.
A couple of things to keep in mind. Does the, I'm not sure what money you get with liquid fuels. You know, would that justify taking dedication of the streets to, to pay for maintenance? And also, if you would accept dedication of the streets, then you got to think about the utilities underneath, mainly the storm drain system underneath. You know, do you want to accept responsibility for cleaning and maintaining the storm drains? Or do you leave that to the homeowners association? It's just a couple of things to think about when you're accepting streets.
So with, with that, of course, Burwick has sixteen of those units towards the back of the property. So we have forty-one, they have sixteen. So there is a split, municipal split between that, in the middle of two of those roads. So that means Burwick would have that side and we would have this side, unless the HOA takes it over and just does it.
Is the HOA the whole thing, the whole development?
Yes.
There was some discussion, I believe, at one time of possibly annexing the Burwicks.
It's, it's dying a slow death.
That's what I thought, I thought it was, they were dividing it.
We're, we're, we're still talking about some other parcels, but that one's probably not going to happen.
So in your discussion with Burwick, have you got any feelings from them on which way they would go, whether to accept?
I, I don't know. I, I don't, I can't give you an answer to that. They're going to have to consider it the same as we do. But, you know, I'm sure after they get an opportunity to, to discuss it, and then we discuss it, we can figure it out. We've worked pretty well with them, so. Long cry from John Abbott saying, don't bury me in Burwick. Yeah, we've been pretty good, so.
So I wanted to bring that up and, you know, get the council's feelings on.
I think we should wait to see what happens with the HOA. Is there a possibility that they don't establish one?
There's always that possibility. If you remember Abbott's Court, you know, at one point, when we were looking at that, Abbott's Manor off of Kenniman, they were going to put an HOA in there, and that was going to take care of all the stormwater. Well, then they didn't. And now all those wetlands are under purview of our enforcement.
How does the HOA get put into a development like that? How does that happen?
I'm not an expert on that, I can't tell you. Sorry.
So there's not an easy answer to this. Obviously, if the borough accepts responsibility, it'll, it, it's going to be responsible to maintain the streets. If it doesn't, and the HOA does, if one is formed, HOAs are not set up for long-term maintenance of these types of facilities, be it stormwater management or roads. You know, with fifty-seven houses, to, to pay for, you know, street maintenance long-term is a heavy lift, I think, for those residents. So I think what you might find is, you know, ten years from now, fifteen years from now, they'll be back. And they'll ask, why, why are, why do our streets look like this as opposed to the other borough streets? That, that's the argument for accepting it, but, you know, it, it's a, it's a difficult choice for council, so. You know, and, and I don't know where Burwick, Burwick is on this either, so I, I don't think it's come up to Burwick, so.
Sounds like a later discussion.
Missed definitely.
So what I'll do is I'll keep open communications with Burwick. And when they have some kind of a direction or concerns that I need to bring back to you, I'll bring those back.
Do we have an idea when they're breaking ground?
We don't have permits for that yet. They have their environmental permits.
Yeah, they have an MPDES permit.
They do have that.
I was told first of the year, something like that.
Which is why we need an indemnity agreement.
Is that what's on for action tonight?
That is also on here.
Okay, so. So Myers has their MPDES permit, they have preliminary plan approval, they're allowed to move earth, right? So in order to protect the interests of the borough, I put together an indemnification agreement with Myers that pretty much says, hey, you're moving dirt at your own risk. You don't have a final plan, we may never approve your final plan. And if you go about, you know, grading and doing all that, and you don't have a final plan approved, it's on you. It's not on our, it's not on us. The other issue that comes up is moving heavy equipment in to do that. So Eric, and I don't know if it's, was you Ted or Eric, but proposed amendments to what I had prepared specifically about how access is going to happen and, and, and documentation of the condition of the roadway now versus when they're done, and requiring the developer to fix any issues that, that they cause. So that's where we are now. If council approves this, we'll sign it, we'll provide it to Myers, and then they're able to move dirt at that point.
As of right now, the only two spots they could use to get big equipment in would be the two proposed empty seats.
Yeah, more than likely, what'll happen, with bigger projects like this, wherever the main entrance is, they'll start putting some stone down, some larger stone to, to, you know, have the heavy equipment go in.
We, we directed from York Road to Kenniman and not from West Fleet Street.
Right. We don't want the heavy equipment coming in through the, where, where all the trucks are coming in.
Right.
And they're going to do it anyway.
They better not.
I was instructed that their intention is to bring everything in through Kenniman.
Right.
In that way.
Yes, this way only one road's, oh, one borough road, well, to Kenniman, but.
In connection with that, about a week and a half ago, I walked Sutton Road, took pictures the whole way from one end to the other. I have it documented with pictures, the condition of the road. Obviously, the road is very good condition now, there was just a few cracks periodically through it. I have those documented, pictures of them. So from this time forward, any equipment moving in there, if the condition of the road starts to deteriorate, we have documentation of how it is now, that we can go back to.
So first, we're going to do, let them break ground now, or? They can break ground now if they're interested, or they can just wait till they get the final approvals? What I've understood.
They can't sell lots.
Correct. They can break ground and start moving earth.
Yes.
So the action item is to approve the erosion and sedimentation control and indemnification agreement.
Make a motion. Second.
All right, motion by Laura, second by Anna. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Is that an aye or a nay?
It's an aye, or like a against it.
That's a nay, okay.
Sorry, nay.
All right, and just some housekeeping here, since we had it under an action item for the HOA, we need a motion and second to postpone that action.
Motion?
Second.
Motion by Austin, second by April, to table the intent to dedicate. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Done? All right, Tim, you're good?
I am.
All right. Mayor's report?
Nothing.
Okay, code enforcement?
Code has been pretty quiet. Nothing unusual this, this past month.
That's a good thing, right?
Yes, it is. And then on to police.
Yep.
Police has been quiet as well for the most part.
Done?
Only thing there, and I don't know if it's, uh, up to the mayor, up to the council, as far as whether or not the new trucks should get marked.
I strongly believe it should be.
I agree with that statement.
I'd agree.
I think, oh, I don't really look at for emergency services. If somebody needs an officer at that point, if you're in that vehicle, and they're looking for somebody, they're looking for somebody, obviously clear-cut and try, "Hey, there's a police vehicle right there." Maybe they can find it easily, stuff like that, so.
Does that change the ability for us to use it for the park purposes?
So.
Because it doesn't leave the, it doesn't leave the grounds.
Yeah. My, my only concern was if I take it out into the park and somebody sees me driving the police vehicle, that's gonna start an uproar that I'm, I think I'm a cop. I, I don't even want that, so.
That's my concern too.
That's, that's my only concern. If somebody sees me driving it to get gas or put it in the park or whatever, 'cause, 'cause I am on the driver list. I'm, I'm not flipping any lights on. I'm not chasing anybody. But I may actually drive the vehicle every now and then.
Would be any different than a maintenance shop doing a repair and then, then test-driving it. Be the same factor.
Right.
That's fair. Right.
Well, if nobody has any objections to it, then we'll, we'll get a badge. We don't need a vote on it, 'cause it's already part of getting the vehicle ready. We just wanted some feedback first. And now that it's finally ready, like it's finally ready this past month, so.
You got a lot of equipment installed, right?
Yeah. Yeah, Chief Graham took care of all that for us, so it saved us a lot of money.
He said he had a bunch of stuff throughout the townships and boroughs, right?
Well, when you said it doesn't leave the grounds, you mean like the borough, right? Because we use it to, or the plan was to use it to help maintain the square as well, right?
I can't drive it. I can't drive it off the property. I can only drive it on the park.
Right.
But he can.
But if I'm working with her, I can drive it over, 'cause I'm an employee.
Okay, perfect, that's.
And, and we do go to New Oxford and back to get gas, so.
Hennes.
Um, all right, and then we'll move forward with that.
All right. Emergency?
One thing I do wanna say about the police before we're done. I did numbers and Chief Graham has gotten us almost seven thousand dollars this year in police enforcement grants, that we have not had to use our general fund tax money to pay for, so.
Awesome. Thank you.
That, that definitely helps.
Emergency services, I don't have anything in there. Reports are in. Uh, committees and organizations, uh, sewer authority, anything? ACBA, PSAB, anything? COG, anything?
They, they're not doing the fire study now, that's correct?
They're not doing the fire study. The committee within, the municipal committee within COG, uh, thought the study would only come back with what they already know. So they decided that it wasn't worthwhile to do another study.
Can, can you elaborate on what COG is?
It's the Adams County Council of Governments. It's a, uh, organization that the municipal officials, they have a meeting like on a Thursday morning at eight o'clock or whatever, and, uh, it's a, that's what that group is. They kinda steer, try to steer good things for the good of the county with the input from all the municipalities.
It, it, it brings the school districts, it brings the county offices, it brings municipal, it brings everybody together.
And, um, under Adams County Boroughs Association, I did attend the meeting Monday night. Uh, they had the Pennsylvania State Fire Commissioner, uh, in to talk about the cooperation between municipalities and the fire departments, and it was a very good, uh, presentation by him on those subjects. All right. ACTCC, budget and finance, nothing. East Berlin Community Center?
Yes, I have one thing. November seventh is when giving spree is. And giving spree is a time when people can give donations regardless of how much it is, a dollar, whatever. I'm really asking people to at least give five dollars if they can. Uh, if you give it, I will have, Scotty will be posting on the website, um, the links for it and everything, but it's at Adams County Community Foundations. They take the donations and you tell them who you want the money to go to. Um, Eback is number thirty-four on the list. And if you could just give a dollar or five dollars or whatever you can, I'd really appreciate, because any money they get, a percentage of that is given to them as, um, like dollar-for-dollar matching fund. And with them trying to maintain the building that they're in now, which is falling apart, and trying to come up with the money to build a new place, they really need all the help they can get. And I really wish that everybody, especially on the council, if we could just each give five dollars or twenty dollars, whatever you can, because that goes in and shows the people who do the grants and things, "Hey, these people really are paying. They are trying. They are, you know." And they would just like to see that. So I'm just asking if everybody on council could just give whatever, five bucks, whatever. I'm giving twenty. I can't afford a whole lot right now. But everybody helps, because for that twenty dollars, they may get a dollar or two extra, so. That's all I'm asking. And Scotty's let you know that she's come up with a new formula that from now on I will be giving to you after the meeting. A thing that you can put on the website of what happened at that meeting, because all you're getting is minutes and they're a month behind.
Yeah.
So they came up with a new formula that I will be giving to you after the meeting.
Okay.
They're too after.
Perfect.
Okay?
Yep.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Parks and Recreation?
Okay, here we go again. One thing I can't stress enough, and I really wish people would at least donate an hour a month to try to help us out with this. Every, eh, every minute that you spend in donating your time goes towards helping us pay for these grants. I mean, eh, if you work an hour, you're getting twenty dollars towards us to put towards a grant. Okay? I don't know if anybody understands that. But every little bit of thing you do helps us out. I mean, even if you only have a half an hour to go, what are plants? To come up to the office and what are the plants? Tell Scotty you were here for twenty minutes, that goes towards a grant. You wanna come up and pick up? You wanna, I'm sorry. You wanna come up and spend the time pulling trash, picking trash up or limbs up off? Whatever you wanna do. Plant trees. We have people coming and planting flowers. We still need several hundred, you know, trees planted. We lost quite a few. So they will be planting more. But really, even Eback needs help with volunteers. Excuse me.
Can you explain a little bit more how that works, 'cause you're like, it goes towards a grant, but we're, are we paying?
What she means is, eh, eh, we can list it as in-kind donations. So if somebody comes and works an hour, then it equates to money that we matched. So, so, you know, we have a day, you know, twenty people come out, spend an hour. At twenty bucks an hour, it's four hundred bucks.
So it's not increasing taxes. It's not an actual money thing. It's just time.
It's actually saving.
The grant.
It's time credit, yes.
Right. It's how much money we don't have to put as a town.
For matching funds.
Right.
For matching funds. So every little bit helps, you know? That's.
Can we put out a list onto our website and onto Savvy Citizen about what's available to do?
Well, Scotty and I have talked about it a couple times about putting something on the website. But all they have to do is call in, you know.
Yeah, just call in and I'll, I'll connect you with Laura and she can let you know when she's coming up to the park. And, uh, you know, 'cause she's got, she's got people from the state that come in. And, you know, they'll bring some people, and then if we have some people, you know, many hands make light work. And then, and then you can be proud that you're part of that.
Allegheny Alliance has, has done all the tree work, um, and they need volunteers too to plant. All those trees were free. The flowers that they will be planting this fall down through the middle is all free from Allegheny Alliance and the Chesapeake Bay Foundation. So I really thank them for helping us get going. And Scotty for all the work he's done getting us the grants, um, to get the playground and all of the equipment and stuff that we need. And I really wanna thank people for the help that they have given so far. I'm really thankful. Thank you all.
Hopefully in the future here, uh, starting next year even potentially, we're looking to have some kind of, uh, community activities out in the park. The Scott Sigmund over here at Warehouse Rocks, uh, we've partnered up with him. He's helped with some costs, uh, with donations towards the volleyball court. Uh, he's looking to donate towards the, the disc golf course. And then he wants to coordinate, um, tournaments, like community tournaments, so that people can come out and just spend a couple hours and get to know each other and, you know, use the facilities. That's what they're here for.
About everything?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry.
Personnel committee, nothing. Safety, nothing. Sidewalks. YATB, ACTCC, nothing. All right. Any correspondence?
No, I've given you it all.
Any openings? Any new business? All right. At this time, we'll entertain public comment. Uh, each person will have up to five minutes to comment. It is public comment. It's not a question-and-answer period. Uh, the council will listen to your comments. Uh, we will review those comments and, uh, go on from there.
So how we'll do this, I'll just go down the list of the people that signed in. So Mr. Brooks, do you wanna speak?
I came to see with this new parking things on, on the street that they're, that I'm hearing so much about.
Okay. Okay.
I understand that that's already been patched since I got here.
Yes.
What, what's, what was the issue to begin with?
I, I can't engage with that at this time.
So wait for Tom to comment, and then the candidate can get a question, ain't you?
Okay. Ms. Sheer.
Thanks for putting me on.
I'm trying to be respectful.
Okay. I'm waiting completely about East Fleet Street. And you're not allowed to park there. The gas company comes on a regular basis and goes to that little gas house, Cleveland Country Club Road. They park sometimes three or four vehicles there while they're working on that gas house. When the lawn service comes, they park a truck and a trailer on Fleet Street. And the apartments next door to my house, also, their lawn guy parks his truck and trailer on Fleet Street to get the mower off so that we can cut the grass. Another issue is if you're not allowed to park on that street, it's a creek floods. Going up Fleet Street on the hill is a good place to put your vehicles so it doesn't get flooded. You're not gonna be allowed to do that. When they replace all those gas lines, the whole street is gonna be filled up with trucks and equipment. And a suggestion is to buy Bruce and Carol Lockman's property, that little garage they lived in. And the borough should buy that and make it public parking. And my one other issue is when they do fix the bridge, I think it should be a three-way stop sign at Cleveland Country Club Road, or at least a two-way. Because I tell them, Chief Graham, but people go through that stop sign every single day. They do not stop. Just been pretty lucky. That's my two cents.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Mr. Sheer.
All right. Thank you for being respectful. Uh, my concern is the no parking on East Fleet Street also. Uh, you may ask yourself, a person who has a parking lot of six to eight cars, why I'm concerned with that. Uh, I already had a couple, a couple of issues in the last couple of years of people using my parking lot and that had no business there. One guy, we almost got into a confrontation about, I think he was sweet-talking somebody's wife in the car. But he, uh, he, he wanted to know if I owned this whole parking lot. And I said, "As a matter of fact, I do, and I pay taxes on it." Uh, but my main concern, uh, is if there's no parking on Fleet Street when your family get together and stuff like that. But there is quite a few on East Fleet Street. Uh, people are gonna be coming down into my parking lot, which I've already been told by my insurance agent that it's not, it's not a good idea to have, to use it as a public. Unless I get some kind of rider on my insurance to cover the people. But I, I don't really want it being used as a public parking on, on the overflow. And what are people supposed to do when they have family that get together? Nowadays, you're lucky, you should be very lucky that you have a large family that you can still get together with. I would urge to reconsider the no parking on East Fleet Street. That's the only, I didn't even read the whole ordinance of the no parking, but that's the only street I feel I have standing with, because it touches my property.
Thank you. Ms. Anderson?
No, I'm good. No questions for your answer so far.
Uh, Ms. Delawes?
Uh, yeah, so mine's also with the parking. Um, we lived on that street for almost twenty years, never had any issues with police vehicles, any sort of emergency vehicle going up and down that. I know at one point when we first moved there, it was two-sided, and then it was removed to the one-side parking to fit emergency vehicles down that way. Um, I do park my car on that street, and cars can still go up and down both sides, no issues. I do know, um, our neighbor who's on the borough has people visit and they utilize the, the parking on the street. Also, at the same time, um, I know Sutton does not have, they don't have parking currently. I don't want our street to look like theirs where people park in their yard. It looks really trashy. I agree with using the Lockmans' property, having the borough buy it. No one lives there. It's not utilized. Um, having the borough buy that and use that as public parking. That would help utilize some of that issue for other streets to have parking on. My other issue is, um, with the parking, to come up with other options. If you wanna keep the parking restrictions, which I wouldn't understand why, that street is very wide, have other options, whether it be just certain timeframes of parking hours, no parking hours.
Dave, Dave, do you know which street she's talking about?
Things like that. My other thing is, is a question on East Fleet Street. It only runs from Country Club to German. The other side from German to one ninety-four is the. The other side from German to 194 is the exact same width, why aren't they in the parking restriction? So, and my biggest thing is, and I know you can't answer this right now, is what brought about this new parking? Were there community complaints, were there accidents? And then what documentation was used to, aside from measuring the width of the street, what was used to come up with this?
Can I just have one more comment?
No, your time is up.
Uh, Mr. DeLaws.
Yes, okay. Been a resident, my wife and I have been a resident for, on East Fleet Street for, you know, one out of twenty years now, never had any parking issues. We were here when the parking was taken away on one side of the street, which we had no issues with. Uh, I've had ambulances to my house with parking on the side, no issues with, school buses, no issues with. One of my biggest complaints to you guys, and I'm very disappointed in all council members, is a lack of communication. You know this, the, uh, your constituents know this, based on most of you or some of you. Uh, you're a member of the Facebook group, and I know you are, or your spouses are, that have complained about this. I've been in IT myself for twenty-five years and I've become very proactive. I don't see any proa- proactivity in any of this communication, you're being reactive now, which I appreciate. No, by trying to communicate better. The antiquated communication of posting in the Gettysburg Times is antiquated. Nobody, I can't say nobody for sure. I would have to say if you took a poll on how many people knew about this parking restriction, very, very, very few people knew about it. As evidenced by posting in a Facebook group and no one knew about it. I went down to my East Fleet Street and I got signatures of every single person on East Fleet Street and German Street opposing this parking. Nobody knew about it. We have a council member who lives right next to us, didn't inform us. Nobody on East Fleet Street, nobody knew about it. Very few people read the Gettysburg Times, this is 2024. No offense to the Gettysburg Times, physical paper. If you want to go online and read it, you have to pay for it after this. And who knows what to look for? Right, there's no communication, zero to the residents that this affects, this is affected. I have a fifteen-year-old daughter who's going to be getting her driver's license soon. My, uh, my driveway holds two cars, my wife and I, where's she supposed to park? My neighbor down the street, her neighbor, April's neighbor, has one, one, uh, one lane for drive. Also is going to have a, a daughter, who's going to have, who's going to get a license. Where are they supposed to park at night? Supposed to park in a different street and have a taxi, walk up in the middle of the night? This doesn't make any sense, absolutely does not make any sense. For over twenty-some years, this has not been an issue. That's my wife brought up. Also, the church is on East Fleet Street as, as well as other residents. Why is that street not affected? It's the same width. Same street, East Fleet Street, that's not affected. There's no parking there, there's parking there, but not parking on our street, there's no issues, same street, same width. Other issues? Like, like our other people, our friends here on, uh, Country Club and, and, uh, German Street who I have, who will be affected as well, they use East Fleet Street for parking. Um, friends, family gatherings, they're going to get fined, are coming over, are we not allowed to have friends and family coming over at any sort of party, any sort of establishment, birthday parties, gatherings, Christmas? House resale value, right? I think, I think these are the lesson, opportunity of buyers coming in if I decide to sell my house, seeing how they, what they have larger families and now they can't park. I'm there, where are they going to park? This is ridiculous, absolutely ridiculous, and I am, I'm, I'm really upset the lack of communication. Affects so many things and so many people. The Borough Council has done nothing but their, what they were legally responsible of doing, that's it. That is it, one-hundred percent it. Nobody knew about this, these people are here because of Facebook group, most of them. I'm upset, really upset, I'm very disappointed. As a constituent, as a taxpayer, as someone who's lived in the borough for over just about twenty years, that this parking situation can't be rectified, there's no, what's the solution? I haven't heard of any single solution. But it was passed, right? It was, this, this resident, this ordinance was passed, no one knew about it, it was passed, until we found out it was passed. And we posted in a Facebook group. Nobody knew about it, everybody, a lot of people are upset, a lot of people are upset. That's my two cents.
Thank you.
I know it's the why.
Alright, we have, uh, Mr. Anderson.
Well, as you council knows, I sat up there for four years. And when they took the parking way on the north side of East Fleet Street, right after I moved here, Mr. Bruce and I were the only two to park on that side. So they came around, okay, that guy parks there, that guy parks there, we just, no need parking here. That was a whole street, that problem. And while on council, we passed an ordinance, being Mr. Graham will nod, he said yes or no. You're not allowed to park in your yard. I'm not allowed to park a vehicle in the yard.
It never passed.
Huh?
Never passed.
Well, even you regardless, I live on the corner of South German and East Fleet Street. I have nowhere to park except for East Fleet Street, if you want to utilize South German Street. According to Mr. Scotty, I can park on South German, on the pavement. So you take away parking in East Fleet Street. I park on the neighbor's property by grace of God and her good graces, but that can change. When I bought my house in two thousand and three, I tore out bushes to make off-street parking so my wife and three little girls wouldn't get hit on the street, so they'd get out and go into the house. And as I said, twenty, it was twenty years ago, I don't live in Perry County, I don't want to park in my yard. I park in my yard for snow emergencies, so the plows can go. That's the only time I park in my yard. Or if I'm going to lose or I'll lose something, that I'm not in the street doing it. I'm ramming off on the corner. Is the chief going to watch my pickup truck while I'm at home, while I park somewhere else? Is the borough going to be responsible out of, out of, or in, broken into my pickup truck? Of course, that's on my truck. All I got to say.
Yeah, thanks, Frank. Ms. Weaver.
She had to leave, so can I speak on her behalf?
Well, you are, you are on the list already. So.
Okay.
You can, you can use yours.
Okay, cool, so she.
So this is Ms. Johnson.
Yes. So she is the only occupied house on East Water Street on the backside by the church. Her daughter cannot make it in their driveway because our driveway is super steep. So she can't get in, so she parks right in front of the house and she's seventeen years old. So had, had there been no parking there, she had to park at the church like you recommended. There's not really lights out there and she gets home from work at eleven-thirty at night, from my understanding. So her daughter at seventeen had to walk in the dark down the street to the house. That's her concern. My concern, if I still have time, you last time mentioned that we are fortunate enough to have a driveway, which we are the only driveway on East King Street, on our side at least. There is a lip that makes it in, that makes it hard to get in and out of our driveway, as it is. And it's also a huge safety hazard when we pull in and out of our driveway because you know traffic speeds down that road. If I have to turn left into my driveway, I am waiting to just get nailed in the back with my daughter in the car. So even though we have parking, it's not safe to pull in and out of East King Street. My two cents.
You guys are on the north side, correct? You guys are on the north side, correct?
They're between Water and King. Correct.
Mr.
We're like two blocks from the. After the square before the Country Club.
Right, but, so your house, your property sits in between King and Water?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Johnson, did you want to speak? Anybody that hasn't spoken yet?
Can I make one more amendment?
You shouldn't, because you already had your time.
Oh, you didn't have your time, do you want to go listen to what he has to say and relay it?
Yeah, we can't do that.
Why not?
That's not the proper way to do things.
Alright.
They already passed it, they said they would propose to.
Anything for the good of the order? Hannah?
I would like to address the fact that I said the exact same thing that Mr. DeLaws said during the vote. And just that I very much agree with the whole. I can't have my family over because that ordinance passed because I live also between King and Water. And I have family members who are handicapped and there is nowhere to park. So, since that seems to be a topic that people want to communicate about, I would just like to reiterate that I had very much the same thoughts. And I believe you guys would have heard that while I was here, and just that not all the council members agreed with this. And we did try, there are new members of council that. I'm sorry to hear that you guys are disappointed. Not everybody agrees, so.
Alright, Austin?
Uh, I second exactly what Hannah said, you know, these are obviously concerns that were addressed. And, you know, at, at that time I thought we should have tabled it and kind of let it go to further discussion. Um, I do have a question for public residents. Obviously you mentioned, you know, we post in the Gettysburg Times.
It's, it's not a engage the public, it's your comments at this time.
Okay, my comment was as a public that the borough building, the website and the Gettysburg Times are not feasible modern solutions for posting, um, any information regarding what's going on here in the borough. You know, obviously I think that's a little bit of a degree of that, you know, they would like the more direct way. And I think we should look into a solution for that for the public.
Okay. Dan?
I, uh, I was going to veto that bill, or that proposal rather. And, um, I was told that I had to go line by line for the ones I disagreed with. At that point in time, I didn't know what the public wanted. So I went ahead and signed that bill, or that proposal. Uh, there was no public here, there were a couple of people here, if I, if I remember right. You were the only one, correct? And then the reporters, that was the only people that were here. Like I said, I did not know what the public wanted. And as, trying to be more to the public, I, uh, I went ahead and signed that. You know, in, in retrospect, I, I think I should have probably researched it more. And I apologize, but it is what it is.
Laura?
I'm going to say this, and I know nobody's going to like it. I think we ought to revisit it and put it back up for a vote for an amendment.
Sorry, what was that?
I said I think we should put it up on the agenda for next month and put it up in order to go down an amendment.
April? I have nothing, uh, Dave?
So just, um, a couple of things, since I can without engaging. Uh, what started the, uh, the parking restrictions? The, um, the Sutton Run, uh, situation created a need to, uh, look at the parking in that area. And while we were looking at that, we were also signing, uh, paperwork for federal and state grants in the amount of eight hundred thousand dollars, which state that we need to consider safety, uh, on all of our roadways. So that's why the engineer looked at it. So that's why we had the engineer look at it, the engineer did a study and determined that by these standards set by the state, that some of the roadways were too narrow. It's all just simply a numbers thing. So yes, it is numbers. But we, we, but we are required, we are required to look out for the safety of our citizens. And that, and that includes making sure we have, uh, safe roadways. The measurements came straight from the state, that was, that was, that's the state. So. I'm not taking questions. As far as the website, um, you know, that was next to nonexistent before I got here. And we have won countless state awards for putting out the information that we do. Most communities don't have the content that we have on that website. And a lot of that stuff, people were coming in and putting in write-downs for, now it's public and available. And there is going to be additional information put out there, uh, such as property files. So that if somebody's looking to buy a property, they can find out exactly what has been done to the property and, and, uh, what improvements have happened and, um, so they can get a better idea of, of the property they're going to purchase. A lot of times we get calls from real estate agents for that information, so what better way to put it out there? So yes, we are being proactive, uh, absolutely. When I was in McSherrystown, we couldn't get a website. I couldn't convince them to get a website. And everybody here was very supportive of it. As far as the solution to our, our communication, it's already been implemented. Uh, as I reported, Savvy Citizen is up and running. I've tested it, I've tested it, I get the notifications. I've gotten every single notification pops up on my phone, says you have notification from Savvy Citizen. Oh, click on it, we've got e-cycling, click on it, there's a council meeting tonight, click on it. Oh, here's the agenda for that meeting. So we are, we are being proactive about that. It's, it's a situation that, you know, you, you don't know until you need it. And yes, we needed it. And yes, I talked to council and council said, yes, we need it. So we got it done. That will give all the information anybody else is going to need about this borough, plus. With me putting stuff on, with Elijah putting stuff on, and with Chief putting stuff on. So it, it is absolutely going to help fill that gap. The other thing I want to point out is there are certain things we have to do by law, we don't have an option. We have to send it to the Gettysburg Times or the Hanover Evening Sun. And they were sending it to the Evening Sun before I got here. And the Evening Sun was charging three times more than the Gettysburg Times charged for our ads. It, some of our simple ads were almost seven hundred dollars. So we saved a lot of costs by going to the Gettysburg Times. Plus, it is, it is the newspaper for our county. That is the newspaper, we don't have another choice, that's it. As far as putting it on our website, if we have a website, we got to put it on the website, we do it. We post it on the door out here because we have to do it. Now we're going to push it out Savvy Citizen, not because we have to do it, but because we realized that there was a gap and we're trying to fill that gap. It's never too late.
Is there a way to publicly notify people about Savvy Citizen?
Everybody here has social media personally. I guarantee you all the posts that have come from this crowd over the past month, somebody can post about it. We don't have a Facebook. And the reason we don't have a Facebook is because people didn't know how to act on it. And it was a liability and we got rid of it. And that was absolutely the right thing to do.
Have you thought about like a community like billboard out in the square at all?
I'd love to answer your questions, but this is my comment period. So.
Alright, next council meeting, October seventeenth at six P M. Entertain motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion by Austin, second by Hannah, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.